And, Lord, if we do need another bond issue or if we need more funding without raising taxes, Lord, I pray that you will somehow get to the public to let them know that what is being done is being done for the best of all the people of Cameron County, for which we are grateful. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our DA, Montreal Lobos, to lead us in the pledge and then in the Texas pledge.
Thank you, Judge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Viallos.
Thank you, Judge.
I guess for the audience, Judge, everybody needs to start brushing up on the Texas pledge, okay? You might be called on.
In case they're called on.
Any public comments from anybody? No? All right. Item two, the consent items, does any member of the court wish to take any of those items out to discuss separately? Okay, do I hear a motion?
All the bids on there are just regular bids, right?
Motion for approval.
Are we gonna, are we gonna, there's no committees involved with that? And evaluating any of those bids? That you know of?
They were already in place, were they not?
I think, yeah, what we had in place is one member from the DA's office, the tax assessor-collector, the auditor or his representative, the budget officer, and then myself or my representative. And that was.
Okay, so we're gonna utilize that committee for all bids as they come in until this court chooses otherwise?
That is correct.
I think that's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
That was already in place.
That way we know, okay? There was a motion by, there was a motion by Commissioner Tamayo to approve all the consent items, which is number two through number four B. That was a second by Commissioner Gadsa.
Reaffirming the evaluation committees.
Reaffirming the standing evaluation committees. Do I, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item five, travel items. Any specific items on travel? Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner, by Commissioner Gadsa, Tamayo, and Commissioner Wood. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Let me take, with, I know we're scheduled to go into executive session, but let me take a couple of items I've requested, I've been requesting out of order because Sheriff needs to scoot. That's item 21. Consideration/authorization to pay Dr. Raoul Gadsa for inmate services for the month of October 2006 at $164.38 a day totaling $4,931.40 for 30 days and $12,000, hold on. That $12,000 a month?
That's what the employee stipulated. So, presenting the employee's information for.
Is there a, okay, does he have a, I mean, I don't know anything about this. Does he have a contract?
There's no contract on the other item we asked him to be on a month-to-month basis until we get an RFP. In the meantime, Judge.
On which item, though?
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, on the next item.
Okay, well, let me sit through.
Yeah, I realize that, that you want to do that. On this, on this item that you have right here, yes, that's the, that's the doctor that was selected by the court when Doctor, I forget the other name that was.
Doctor Lenz?
Well, Doctor.
Doctor Victor Gonzalez was selected to be the jail physician for a, and to contract with. That contract was never executed and Doctor, the physician became ill and was not able to serve. And so, the, the approach of having a doctor, we needed somebody real quick, so Doctor Garza stepped forward and provided services. He's been paid $4,000, or $168 or $138 a day for September, but there's a bill pending for October, November, and December. And so, I was not necessarily going to go ahead and write that without a contract, and your legal department's been working on a contract for Doctor Garza.
Well, I guess my question is, if it was $4,931.40 for 30 days, which is a month of October, why is it now $12,000, I mean, almost three times as much for November and three times as much for December? I don't understand that.
That's why I brought to the Commission's Court for this discussion.
It was also $4,931.40 for the month of September.
Right.
And the month of October.
Mark could probably answer that, right?
I can probably answer a little bit better. I didn't know how much he was charging, and I didn't know he was not on a contract. However, on the Doctor Lenz, we also had a nurse practitioner that was being paid $90,000 plus Doctor Lenz $60,000. So that's $150,000. Doctor Garza, we've been providing 20-some hours a week, and we're not utilizing a nurse practitioner. So consequently, we figured this is the best way to go because it saves us also in transporting prisoners to different doctors at all different times. We tried to work with Doctor Lenz and it didn't work out that way, and what we're doing right now is that hopefully on the next item here, that they'll go from the month-to-month contracted and then go for RFPs. But we certainly are happy with the kind of service he's been providing, and he's been there anywhere between 20 to 30 hours a week. So we figure that pretty reasonable for some concern for a physician.
Well, let me ask the question again. In the month of October for 30 days, it was $164.38, or let's say a little under $5,000. Now, it's more than doubled for November and December. My question is, according to Commissioner Wood, we paid the same thing in September. Was it August, too, or just September?
Just September.
Let's say September $4,931, October $4,931, now we come November and December $12,000. I mean, that's a pretty significant jump, don't you think, Sheriff?
Did he have more visits, or?
He'd spend more hours here at the jail, and also, like I stated, I didn't know he was not on the contract. I had no idea. I don't write the contracts. I just, I didn't even know about Victor Gonzalez. I just knew he told me he was gonna be the physician, and all of a sudden, he didn't show up, so they brought in somebody else, a judge and commissioners. And I, that's, you know, I'm just on the blind side as you are.
I think that if I remember a little bit of that, he was not doing a 20 to 30-hour week with you in the first few months, right?
That's right. He was just coming here occasionally, you know, maybe a couple of hours a week, and that's it.
Nine or something. And then, as of November, you, somebody in the jailed area gave him a schedule to be there certain hours?
We, we said we needed to do that, and he was willing to do that, okay? And that's what it is, and we, I don't have the figures with me, and I wish I had. I didn't even know this item was on the agenda until they told me about it. And otherwise, I've got to bring you the figures as to how much money, you know, we also save by not transporting the inmates anywhere, by keeping that ratio, which is 1 to 48, and it saves a lot of time.
Well, I think what you mentioned a few minutes ago, that we were paying a nurse practitioner X, a Doctor.
$90,000.
That's, that's $150,000.
That's $150,000.
Okay, but if you analyze, it's $12,000.
Then you take some of the money from there, and that's how you're gonna pay.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. It's $144,000 for one person versus $150,000 for two people. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just wondering why we went from October, you know, to now November, September, October, for a little under five, then November, December, now 12. On the, on the approval, on the next one, is that, is that on a month-to-month basis at $12,000 a month?
That's right.
And I think initially, if I remember, Mark, you know, and we were all here, when he stepped in, he was a non-call physician. He was not providing, you know, services like from 10 to whatever, you know, like a regular officer.
I, I think during the months of September and October, he was responding on an emergency basis. I'm not saying to an emergency situation, but to a, as-needed basis because there was not, there was, I guess, some uncertainty whether the prior physician was going to step back in or not. I think there was a lot of uncertainty at that time. And so, Doctor Garza stepped in and helped out when we did not have a physician or anybody volunteering to assist us. And so, I guess in October and November and December, actually, November and December, then he committed to spend some amount of time, which I imagine is more than 20 hours a week.
30.
30 hours a week. So, we're paying at $12,000, 30 hours a week, or 120 hours a month, roughly.
How much were we paying Doctor Gonzalez, Mark?
But he wasn't on.
But how much, how much was Doctor Gonzalez being paid when he was on?
I don't know if we actually paid Doctor Gonzalez because initially, and I'm gonna have to go back and look, but it was almost at the same time that the contract was getting ready to be executed that he became ill. And so, I don't know if he ever actually stepped in. I'm not sure. I'll have to look at that, but I'm not sure we.
So, Sheriff?
Yes.
The justification that, from what I'm hearing you say, is that in November and December, there were more, more hours that he worked?
Exactly, Commissioner, and if you look at it, it figures out about $100 an hour, which for a physician, I think that's very inexpensive. I think we're getting excellent service for that amount of money, and on the long run, I think we're gonna save money because, and I know a nurse practitioner does a lot of things, but he is here personally, and that, that makes a big difference. That makes a big difference with Texas Commission Jail standards, also makes a big difference with the United States, with the US Marshals, United States Marshals, because they have been requesting something like that. So definitely, $100 an hour for a physician, and also, he's available anytime we call him. So I think it's, I thought it was well worth it.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve. This is another example, Judge, of something that we need to.
That's exactly right. I mean, it's, you know.
We need, we need to come up with a contract.
Okay, I hear a motion by Commissioner Benavides to approve the payment.
Second.
No, second by Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please note.
I just have one question on this in regards to, I mean, this is like a health service, and this is more of a legal question. You know, there's, there's no issue with paying something over $15,000, right? Because it's a.
Professional service.
Professional service?
If, yes, there is an issue, but it's, this is something that happened, you just can't, you can't go back and stop, you know, stop the county operation or the necessity for a, for a doctor. I give you more complete history.
No, 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 I just want to make sure. That's fine.
No, it does require, we need to go out for RFQs as soon as possible. This is a stopgap.
But in this situation, would need to come under emergency? An emergency situation?
It is. It is.
Doesn't look right.
I don't think qualified as an emergency situation because it's a voluntary action, but it's also a declaration. We couldn't foresee that the doctor that was hired could be sick. There's some other issues, but I think it's, it's just.
It's a necessary, we've got to have a doctor to tell we can get an RFQ out.
Okay. All right. Please note my abstention on item. On item 21, I abstain. Item 22, consideration/approval of professional services agreement with Doctor Raoul Gadsa Jr. to provide medical service to the Cameron County jail facilities. Is that it? Is that also a $12,000 a month?
That's correct, Judge, and we'll go out for RFPs.
Okay, Mike Forbes. Okay, you want to take care of this ASAP? Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the month-to-month contract with Doctor Raoul Gadsa? All in favor, by, by? Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Gadsa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item carries. Do I hear a motion to go into executive, anything else want to take out of order? Anybody can just scoot out for anything? No?
Just a minute, Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
I see Judge Gonzalez.
He just came to.
Which item were you waiting for?
They're here for the item.
Oh, you're here for the equipment list. Okay, we're not gonna approve that right now. There's gonna be some discussion on that. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Gadsa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning management and purchase issued with the international bridge system on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Disciplining Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.0712. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 29, Primeta Road in the Precinct 4 area pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.072. Item C, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 1 for right-of-way for the West Rail project pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.072. Item D, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning agreements with Mutual of Omaha for insurance for county employees pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.0711A and 2. We are in executive session. Do I have a move to come out of executive session by Commissioner Gadsa? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Executive session. Item A, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning management and purchase issued with the national bridge system. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 29, Primeta Road in the Precinct 4 area. Do I hear a motion to accept the $692?
$692 amount.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, seconded by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item C, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 1 for right-of-way for the West Rail project. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, seconded by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item D, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning agreements with Mutual of Omaha. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Gadsa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Items for discussion and action. Item eight, budget amendments, line item transfers, and/or salary schedules.
Item eight?
Item eight.
Judge and Commissioners, the budget amendment, before you, is setting up the positions that were approved for the tax office, for the compliance officer, and the clerk, and also, the allocation of lap salaries into extra help and building maintenance. And then the second one is setting up the travel funding for the legislative agenda and the salary schedules or changes that the District Attorney's Office is making in their drug forfeiture fund.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the item eight?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, seconded by Commissioner Gadsa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Approval of minutes for December the 28th, 2006, the special meeting. And item B, January 5th, 2007, special meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Gadsa. Everybody signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please note my abstention on the December 28th, 2006 meeting.
And mine on January 5th.
And Commissioner Woods on January 5th. All, you know, any opposed? Item carries. Item 10, approval of claims.
I have some additional claims to read in. I didn't provide you a list. I just received a copy, and I'll read them in relatively quick. Check number 174361 to AEP Tech Central Company. It's Fund 83, that's the park system payable in the amount of $3,642, conversion of 340 feet of overhead lines. Check number 174362, border health issues. This is a loan to Fund 23, or 230, in the amount of $3,000. Check number 174363, payable to John L. Shergold. This is for professional services, $450. Check number 174364, United Narcotics Intelligence. This is out of the forfeiture funds, Fund 900, and it's an operating loan to Fund 22 in the amount of $5,000. Check number 174365, payable to Aurora Agular, Fund 100, Department 641. It's the amount of $258.47. This is for a, in the child welfare department, a travel costs. Check number 174366, payable to Texas Department of Public Safety, Fund 100, Department 420. These are state inspections that we're paying for a number of those in the amount of $550. And then the final check is, check number 174372, payable to Leonardo Rincones and Philip A. Bellamy, Fund 100, Department 410, and these are settlements and judgments in the amount of $14,000. This is in response to a request by your counsel.
Unauthorized by the commission last week.
Right. So, I request that these be added to the list published and move, and recommend their approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve the, the claims with those also added by our auditor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood.
Judge, I am abstaining on warrant 0017437 to the medicine shop, and I will be turning in my affidavit to you.
Okay, I abstain on warrant number 0174166, Harlingen Water Works, for the amount of $501.23, and somebody's to give me an affidavit so I can sign that. Aside from that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 11, consideration/authorization to develop a policy regarding the use of county property. Commissioners, just to let you know that I will be starting, starting to work on a policy in regards to the use of county property. I hope to have something for you in the next couple of weeks. This is to clarify the usage of the property by whomever the general public, by us as elected board members, or, or whatever. So with that, I just ask for, for your acknowledgement that I'll be presenting something like that to you in the next couple of weeks.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Gadsa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 12, consideration/authorization to develop a policy regarding the naming of county property. Again, I intend to bring a policy to you, hopefully in the next two to three weeks. I passed out an agenda, a copy of an agenda item that goes back to 1999, and in that policy, let me, if I can get it. Yeah? If I can. This was the, at that time, this is in your packet, item number 12. Commissioner Matts had suggested a policy to be implemented in regarding the, the naming of county facilities. And if you read in the, in this particular minutes, Judge Nahosa stated that the policy reflected that county buildings could not be named after individuals employed with the county, and noted that many buildings were currently named after individuals. So, I think we need to get a, a formalized written policy in regards to the naming of future county buildings, and with that, I'd just like to ask for your acknowledgement that I'll be working on that, on that policy.
I was reading through this. It looks like that there was a motion, and there was a second, and it carried unanimously, but it also says it was tabled.
It never came back.
Okay. It just never came back.
Yeah, we, remember, my staff looked, along with the county clerk's office, right? And we couldn't find where it ever came back. So, the way I inferred it was reading was that there is a policy somewhere in regards to the naming, but we couldn't find it. So we're gonna try to just go ahead and just develop a new policy and, and give it to you all, give you free review, and then come back with comments or suggestions at some point in the future, if that's okay with you all.
Okay.
That was my question, if there was a policy already in place.
We couldn't find it.
You couldn't find it?
No. I mean, right, we looked to see what ever came back. You couldn't find anything. We couldn't find anything, so I'm assuming that, I don't know.
And I presume that that's the same thing that happened with item 12. There was no policy in place regarding the, I mean, the, the one before.
Item 11?
Using, yeah, using county property.
That's correct. I mean, I don't know if they're out there or not. So, if they're not, we'll just go and try to put something together, get input from the court, and just make sure it gets filed properly. Everybody has something in file that we can refer to. So with that, I'd like to hear a motion for item number 12.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gadsa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 13, consideration/action regarding the composition of the Salary Grievance Committee pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 152.014. We had some discussion at the meeting, and I guess the first meeting, it appears that the, it was never drawn for the upcoming budget, the, for the grievance. Everybody thought it happened in June or July. That was for the previous budget, so we need to go ahead and do that today. So who's gonna do that? Oh, no wonder you're here, Charles.
Okay, we're ready to go.
All right.
And you gotta do all 64.
Did you decide on the three or the nine?
I'm sorry.
Did you decide on the three or the nine?
Three or nine, what? Individuals.
Members and.
No, the nine. We decided the last time.
What you do is take out names and name them out and record them.
Number one.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. Item 13 is regarding the composition, and we're deciding on nine public members.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And item 15 is pulling the names. There's a selection.
Item 13 regarding, I thought we already decided the composition the last time.
I'm just reading the agendas.
Well, I move that we, we to the nine.
Okay.
Second that.
Second by Commissioner Wood.
Second.
Commissioner Wood, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 14, consideration/approval.
You want to go 15? You're going.
Ask for 14, by the way. Consider, consideration/approval of revised salary schedule for Commissioner Precinct 2, Fund 150, 618, it's lot number one. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides. Do I have a second?
I have a question.
I do, too.
Where is the money coming from?
Lap salaries.
And is it coming to?
Within my budget, yeah.
Is it coming to all those positions to equalize them all for all four commissioners?
I don't have enough lap salaries for all of them.
Well, I don't think that we should say that one commissioner's, you know, secretary is worth more than the other three.
Does this, and this would mean that, for instance, and I can understand, you know, if he says he has the money, I can, I can sympathize with him wanting him to add that money, because I, I call mine an office clerk, as office manager, and it's a big job that they do, and they all deserve that salary. So what's gonna happen with the new, what, what do you have in mind, John, for the new budget? Then that salary would stay at that's...
I would propose that we all look at our office secretaries, our clerks, as you call it in your case, at budget time. Because you're right, they do a lot more than just a receptionist work. They take care of our office. They do the filing.
They manage the office.
They talk to the people, they manage the office, they take care of everything. And I realize I have lap salaries because I have had, I've been without since January 1st of a secretary. And y'all may not have lap salaries, and that would just accommodate it for the balance of this year until the new fiscal year comes in.
Mark, is there any money anywhere that we can, is Mark gone?
He's gone.
Javier?
You know, my issue is, first of all, I already had a concern, and I was hoping that that would prompt you, Judge, but I'll do it next week, on a policy to deal with lap salaries. I have an issue with everybody trying to go to lap salaries to fund things. You know, if we decide that we're all going to be able to do that, fine. In the past, we had utilized lap salaries countywide to help the budget. You know? Now it seems that we have established a precedent, because you're not the first one to ask. We had that occur in weeks past, and we already approved it. At that time, we were told, we're going to do it because it's been occurred in the past, you know, so we're going to continue doing it. And I have a concern with that. I think that, you know, that being the case is kind of like, it doesn't give people an impetus to be more frugal with money or to find other ways of financing. You know, I mean, I had issues. I didn't have an individual in my office for a number of months purposely. And I says, well, hopefully that will give me more money the next year, but that didn't, okay? I didn't bring it to the court. It just, but it got put into the big pot, and it helps the surplus. So there's two things that happen. One is, we don't put anything back in the surplus for lap salaries, which we normally, if Mark is here, knows that we budget an amount every year for. Two, next year, our operating costs are increased by we put into the expense structure.
Correct.
So, Mark's back there.
Yeah, he's back there.
And I know the situation that I'm having right now is, I've interviewed three people already and have not been able to attract one at the current salary. And I've got two more interviews scheduled, one for tomorrow and one for Thursday, and hopefully, perhaps a little bit more money will attract one of them to be positive in coming to work for me.
Well, I commended the judge for raising the salary for his secretary, because I know the kind of work she does and how much work she has on her plate, and so do our secretaries. So Javier, anywhere that we might find money to equalize this?
Well, let me, what is it that the court members want to do? Raise their office clerks to that same amount?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do.
Okay, well, it's not on the agenda for today, but you know what? I'm going to have lap salaries in my office, right? Because of the cuts that I made. So I don't have any problem using those as a one-time deal to, if that's what they want to do, and I don't know where Sophie is on it.
Well, I think it ought to be equalized.
And I have no problem with that, but you know...
Good for the goose, it's good for the gander.
And it's good for the duck, you know? But I think the point is this, that Commissioner Gadsa's right, but the precedent was set last year. That precedent was set back in December. So, you know, this is, I believe, the third time this has happened, you know, where we're using lap salaries. And, you know, the first time, everybody that, well, I wasn't here, but everybody was here voted for it. The second time, I was here, everybody voted for it. The third time, I'm assuming everyone's going to vote for it. You know, so it's not equivalent to having a policy. The precedent was already set back in December. So for us, all of a sudden arbitrarily say, well, we're not going to do this anymore. Well, then that's not, you know, fair to future, you know, to folks that have the ability to do it, because we already did it. The court should have not done it back in December. But they chose to do it, so the precedent was set. Now, if you want us to work on a policy in regards to that, I'll be more than happy to.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
I'll be more than happy to do that. And do you want to wait to budget time? Or so if someone, are people going to rush to develop a policy?
I won't wait till next week.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, Commissioner, I'll be more than happy to allow you to help me develop a policy. And I think the file just says, no. Just big bold letters, okay? But again, every elected official has, or has a right to come to Commissioner's Court and ask for the policy to be changed. And we've seen that with naming of county buildings, and now with this, or whatever. There may be policies out there. So I'll be more than happy to work with Commissioner Gadsa, if y'all don't have any objection to coming up with, you know, with a policy addressing that. But for now, this item is here, and for the next week, let's, you know, get it from, from the county judge's office enough to, well, how much is it?
Well, I was going to say, I'll go along with that, but I think your idea of using your lap salaries to help us out, and not just myself, I mean, the other three commissioners. And then we do need a policy, and I think you're finding out that we need a lot of policies.
Well, yeah, we need... But okay.
I need to clarify something, or actually to whose salary you want to equalize, because actually the secretary in precinct one actually makes more than the $27,000.
Well, I think we just bring her down.
So everyone's, so everyone is the same. I don't think so. A long time. Yeah, it's been like that for years.
Well, can we just table it and see, between now and next week, we can do a comparative analysis to see what we can do with them?
I'll leave that to Commissioner Wood.
Well, I know where three of us are, the other one is Commissioner Precinct One's salary. I'm trying to get someone hired, and I need to try to bring in enough money to be able to do that.
Why don't we do this? I don't have any problem supporting this. I don't have any problem supporting using my lap salaries to equalize whatever slot. Well, which is your lowest paid slot? Is it the same?
It's the same slot.
Okay, is it the same slot?
Yeah, I call him office clerk.
Okay. And at what level is that right now?
At the lowest level. Mine is...
24, 8, 25.
24, 8, 25?
875 or...
No, it's...
24, 8, 25.
Yeah, it's on the salary script of what the original salary was. The salaries for the secretarial positions, or excuse me...
It's the same as...
They're all the same. Precincts two, three, and four.
24, 25. It was moved up to 27, and that's what I'm talking about here. It was like $2,175.
Yeah, $2,175. I have no problem doing that, if that's a wish of the court, doing that. And then we'll be working on a policy to address that. And then if y'all want to address those particular salaries at budget time, you can do that as well. Okay?
And I'll move to change that to include the secretarial positions for precinct three and four.
Okay. It's not on the agenda, but you know what we can do? We can go ahead and do it, and then just ratify it the following, the following meeting, if that's okay?
To the, to the $27,000?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we do that? If that's okay with you all? Is that all right?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. All right. So that was a move by Commissioner Benavides to approve 14, and also taking from the county judge's budget, the amount of money needed to bring the comparable position of Commissioner Precinct Three and Precinct Four to that same level, okay?
Second.
And that was a second by Commissioner Tamayo.
Judge, is that, can I ask that that motion be to place that on the agenda for next week?
We can do that.
Place it on the agenda for next week.
All right. That was moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor signify...
Which part are we placing?
Okay. Which part are we going to be placing?
I think what he's talking about is placing my transfer of my lap salaries to theirs. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Understood that. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. All right. Item 15, consideration selection of public members for the Cameron County Grievance Committee in compliance with the Texas Local Government Code Section 152.014A and Section 152.015. Item number one, first person, Mary Jezuniga from Harlingen.
Put a one on it.
I did. On the back. Ray Reyes from Harlingen. Deborah Eliff from San Benito. Ed Lagarza from Brownsville. Abraham Vega from Brownsville. Rafaela Morales from Brownsville. Michaela Resendez from Brownsville. Maria Cristina Garcia from Harlingen. James Thomas Elkin from Harlingen.
Six or nine?
Nine. Mary Ann Bassan from Harlingen. Lee Anne Fitzpatrick from Brownsville. Patty Montes from Brownsville. Flavio Gonzalez from Brownsville. Luis Rodriguez from Brownsville. Jim Griffin from Brownsville. Rodrigo Rodriguez from La Feria. Joe Gonzalez from Brownsville. Cynthia Martinez from Brownsville. John Phillips from Rancho Viejo. Dan Russell from Los Fresnos. Alicia Gonzalez from Harlingen. Raquel Diaz from Rojondo. Francisco Guerrero from Brownsville. Gabriel Garcia from Harlingen. Eric Rodenbaugh from Brownsville. Margarito Morillon from Brownsville. Barbie Garcia from Olmito. That's it. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe. All right. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge a selection of the public members for the Cameron County Grievance Committee? Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Consideration action regarding the county's legislative agenda for the 80th Texas Legislative Session?
Judge, we put this item on the agenda every week. We don't have any updates this week.
And do I hear a motion to acknowledge?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gadsa. Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I have a question. Is it okay?
Absolutely.
In regard to this legislative agenda, I don't know if any of your offices have been getting calls, but I have gotten numerous calls from one individual that I think wishes to be considered to serve as, what's the proper terminology to use?
Oh, consultant.
Consultant to the county to help us with the legislative agenda. I think that to at least be able to give the individual the definitive answer of whether or not we're going to use any type of consulting services. I know that we're all active in the process. We're all doing what we can to make sure that our agenda moves forward. But if this court is going to consider at all, I think we need to just agree to consider or agree to just do our own thing legislatively. I don't know what thoughts we have in that regard. But I don't know if the individual has called any of your offices.
She has been calling quite a bit.
And she sounds like she's a very able-bodied individual to do work, but I don't know if we want to move it in that direction at all, if we want to consider it, if we want to just not consider it.
I feel that we're very capable with the restructuring that we've done to do it in-house, but I think that down the line, if we see that we need one, I don't think that we need one. I don't feel that we need one right now. I don't know how the rest of the court feels.
I think we've been doing fairly well with the staff that we have, unless they feel that they need any additional assistance. Pete, how do you feel about that?
Commissioner Wood?
Well, Sophie was asking Pete how he feels about it. I personally think that we do a really good job among ourselves, and we've all in the past been willing to travel to testify and to do whatever was needed to provide the information for our agenda. Also, a lot of these items, we will be able to pick up, not necessarily a lot of them, but some of them, through TAC and through, you know, some of the organizations that we already belong to. And they have, you know, the ability to also lobby for it. So I think we're doing pretty well as we are. I don't know of a need to go out and, you know, spend funds for a specific lobbyist to do something. And on a different item, Pete, and I know we've talked about this before among us here at the commission in meetings, the one bill that is being put together for a specific change in Olmito to solve the problem we have out there that was created back in the '30s, and that's going through the process, from what I understand. So I don't know whether we want to, you know, actually put it down here on our legislative agenda or just keep following it. I certainly will be following it, and I know our state reps will be following it, and our state senator all have it in tow.
Well, this is the federal list, right?
No, it's the state.
No, it's the state.
It says federal legislative priorities.
They were handed out to us.
Number 16.
Round on 16, Texas Legislative Session.
Okay. Okay, I was reading this one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can go ahead and add one for Olmito.
We'll add it to the... We can add it to keep, you know, so we don't lose track of it.
Pete, I had asked you if you thought you needed any assistance at this point?
No, I think, you know, we're pretty much handling the agenda. I think a couple of meetings ago, I mentioned that the first 30 or 45 days of the session, there's really not a lot going until the committee assignments are issued. Once that happens, you know, then we'll start probably having updates on a weekly basis. But I don't anticipate, you know, needing any help from the outside. Our transportation projects, we'll be working directly with TechDOT at the Austin level and at the Far District Office. On specific issues like the Olmito, I think, you know, we've already briefed and met with Representative Lucio, and so we'll just stay abreast of where that and track that bill as it goes along. So at this point, I would say that we're okay the way we are.
We also have the issue that's come up, at least in Williamson County, I believe it is, where there was an issue about spending taxpayers' money for hiring outside lobbyists to lobby on behalf of the entity. And I think in that case, they told Williamson County to cut it out. Can't do it, by some judge.
Just to add to that, I think, you know, this commission has had a great relationship with many of the agencies in Austin, and, you know, you all can pick up the phone and call anybody at any particular time, and I think that adds to our, to our support.
Well, I just want to be able to say, you know, we discussed it, and it doesn't sound like we need one when they call me.
Okay.
There's one item that's not on here that, I got a letter from State Representative Veronica Gonzalez, I don't know if anyone else did...
Yes, I did too.
...in regards to the lighting of county roadways.
I think it's 593.
And it's using the CDBG funds, and she's taken that legislation one step further to be able to assess the residents of that road, you know, if you can get them to agree to pay for the lighting through some way. But in the bill, and I'm preparing a response at my office, but I think if we prepare one countywide, if in the bill we could ask not only to be able to do that, but to be able to some way be able to enforce the collection, that's one of the issues that we've had, such as the garbage, where we can't enforce, we don't have the hammer to be able to enforce anything, we just have the ability to do it. And if some legis... I have a copy of that bill, and I will forward it to your office.
I've emailed her, asking for the same thing, Commissioner, and she did reply, in fact, just a few hours ago, mentioning the fact that she'd like our support.
What we've done in the past, what we've done in the past is pass resolutions, you know, either in support or against. So we'll get with her office, get the information that we need, and then prepare a resolution.
Well, I'll forward the information. That way you can just prepare the response. And also, I think that, I might add that last week, Commissioner Tamayo and myself were present when the delegate, and David Garcia were present when the delegation of state senators and state representatives flew into Harlingen for their weekend down here. And at that time, I think it was Smith, was it Smith? The chair of the County Affairs Committee offered his assistance to this court, to you, Judge, and all the commissioners, to please utilize his office for any legislation that we would like to help on. As I chair the County Affairs Committee, everything that deals with county affairs comes through my office. Call me, and I will make sure that we get the help you need.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 17, consideration and approval of signage on the Dancy Building Offices. Pete?
Judge, commissioners, we put this on the agenda just to get your thoughts. Melissa with the judge's office, Eddie and with construction management and myself met to review an original submittal back in late November. That submittal was over budget, a couple thousand dollars, and we've since revised that original submittal, and that should be in your backup. We made some changes to word, took a lot of wording out that didn't need to be in place, and so, you know...
Because they're charged by the letter, right?
What kind of material is this they're making them out of? Some of them are pretty expensive.
Not the, not the foam part, but the other part. Okay.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Gadsa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
I have, I have just one other question. They're approved by the THC, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 18, consideration approval of resolution regarding the realignment of FM 803?
I have a question on this, Pete, and I realize you prepared a nice resolution. I understand what they're trying to do and what they're trying to accomplish.[1796.33] I understand what they're trying to do and what they're trying to accomplish. I know we had a public meeting several months ago in Los Presnos about this issue. And one of the issues that came up with FM 511 being rebuilt to interstate-type standards, what the access was going to be on the current existing FM 803 from that intersection. At that time, TechDOT was talking about eliminating that access. And there were lots of folks who lived between 511 and what the new access on the new 803 will be to get them back to the expressway in front of Rancho Viejo. What they'd have to do would be either say they're going home from Brownsville, they've got to go out to Rancho Viejo, go up a couple miles beyond where they live, then come back down to where they live in the same way if they're leaving. Has TechDOT clarified some type of access for these folks?
I'm not aware of that, Commissioner. And I placed the item on the agenda because that was a request that I got from TechDOT. But I emailed the district engineer, and I was hoping that, I asked that same question because I was at that public meeting. And I was hoping that I would get a response from TechDOT by the time of the meeting, but I didn't. So I was going to recommend to the court that we table it.
Because the realignment is good, you know, and I think we need to have the realignment. What we need to be able to also provide access ingress and egress.
Letting see that here in the sketch that TechDOT provided.
They don't address it. So I'm concerned about them not addressing it, I guess.
Then we better see.
So if we table it and get some kind of information, that would help me, I think, and the people that live out there.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tamayo to table item 18, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion?
I might have signed that in executive session because they passed it to me.
Yeah.
But shred it? I didn't.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 19. Consideration and possible action regarding the county's federal legislative agenda.
Judge, commissioners, we prepared a memo for you all to review. Getting ready to start our appropriations process in the next Congress. We wanted you to look at the projects that we've previously submitted. You have a list of them there in the memo. And we've added a couple of them, in particular, some transportation projects in the Harlingen area, the FM 509 corridor project and the north-south parallel corridor in the Harlingen-San Benito area. Like I said, we've submitted these projects in the past. Last year, because of the change in Congress, there was no activity with regards to earmarks. And so we're looking to submit these again. Hopefully, we'll get some progress this year.
And I would say, David, I would have the same question. At this point, do you feel like you need any additional help as far as carrying our agenda?
I think we're doing a pretty good job. You know, Pete and myself, as well as the commission, you know, does a good job of reaching out to the senators and representatives. And I think at this point, we're okay. If I feel, in my opinion, if I feel that we'll need somebody, I'll surely let you know.
On the GIWW realignment project, is $1 million all we need for the next phase of that project?
On that project.
That is the intercoastal realignment.
Yes, sir. On that project, we're having a meeting next Wednesday. We've set up a meeting with the Corps of Engineers to get a status on where we're at. I think $1 million is to take us to the completion of studies.
Does that include the EA?
I don't think that does, no.
I don't think that doesn't do the EA, right?
I think the EA was about $7 million or somewhere in that.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we're going to meet with the Corps to get their thoughts, to get a status of where they're at, and to brief the judge and his staff on the status of that project.
On that meeting on Wednesday, I'll be, I think I'm out of town, but any member of the Court invite them to attend if they can. Okay? Do I hear motion on item 19?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Wood. Do I have a second by Commissioner Tamayo? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 20. Consideration approved.
I think, Judge, it's important to note two things on what we just approved. And those are two things that have not been on our agenda in past years. And that is the FM 509 corridor and the north-south parallel corridor that is being worked on between Harlingen and San Benito. The other one is the corridor that goes on 509 to meet up with US 77. Those are two new initiatives on our part as far as a request is concerned.
Right. The FM 509 corridor, the regional mobility authority is actually working on that. They're doing an environmental assessment. We're hoping to be able to clear the project environmentally. In the next nine months or so, we'll be having our first public meeting the second week in February. And so we felt that we were far enough into the EA process that we should start requesting funding for the next phase, which would be a design and right-away acquisition. On the US 7783 South Parallel Corridor, the same thing. We've had one public meeting, had excellent response and receptiveness from the property owners. On that one, there was about 70 to 80 property owners that would probably be impacted. But again, we had a public meeting, got great comments from the property owners. And we're also about, you know, nine to 12 months away from clearing the project environmentally. So it's, and those two projects are being funded by Project Roadmap. I know Mark mentioned Project Roadmap during the workshop session.
And those two projects, in addition to a lot of the other items that we have on both the state and the federal agendas, have to do with some of the communities in the county. And I know that most of them, if not all of them, that it affects are working with us toward this. And we need to be sure and keep the line of communications open with them so they can also have it on their radar screen when they're talking to people in Austin and Washington. And we're all singing the same song.
They do.
And I know they do. But we need to, you know, reiterate that and be sure that we keep them in tune.
Very good.
Yeah. And this one, the county's taking the lead because the portion, you know, of those roads are in the county jurisdiction. At some point, we will have to come back and prioritize them because, you know, the funding will be limited. And we're probably going to be asked by our senators and congressmen to, you know, develop the shortlist. So we'll start with this, and then we'll come back and see what the, see how the funding issue is looking in DC.
Tell them to give us our portion of the money that they wanted to build a wall with, and we'll do all this stuff.
Well, we're not, we're being very conservative in what we're asking for.
Okay. But they, and that's one thing, too. When we go up there and ask about it, they know we're conservative about it, and they've been real responsive to us. They've been, it's been a benefit to us by not going up there, you know, blowing things out of proportion and smoke and mirrors, but talking to them about realities and what the costs are and what needs to be done and how it needs to be done.
Yeah, I think what we've been pretty good about, and, you know, it really helps senators and congressmen, is that we show progress. You know, every time we go with our funding requests, you know, we start by giving them a project update. And every single time, you know, we're able to make huge progress on the projects. You know, West Rail, you know, for example, we've made huge progress on that project, the North Rail relocation, you know, with relocating the switch art. So we've shown to them that, you know, we've utilized their money efficiently and effectively, and we've made a difference in the community. So that's key. I think we've made that very clear to staffers that, you know, we want to be sure that we show them that progress is being made. And I think that helps us at the end. You know, there's a lot of communities that get funds, and, you know, five, six, 10 years later, the funds are still there and they're not used. So I think every single penny we get, you know, we get to use it as quick as we can.
Well, what I've observed when I've gone with you to Washington is that Cameron County has credibility. And that says a lot, and it helps us.
Thank you, Pete. Item 20. Consideration and approval of legal services agreement with Ruben Herrera and Santiago Galarza to provide representation for the indigent defendants of the County Court of Law Number Two. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Move by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 23. Consideration and approval of this amendment and extension commercial lease agreement between Cameron County and BP Newman to provide offices for United Narcotics Intelligent Task Force and HIDTA located 1100 FM 802 Suite 101, Brownsville, Texas, 7521, from January 1, 2007 through December 31, 2007.
I move to approve.
Move by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Gatsa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 24. Consideration and possible approval of fiscal year 2007 equipment list.
Judge and commissioners, in your packet was included, actually, three lists. The first is a general fund, and it's actually quite a bit less than the original list. What's missing from here is the requests that were made by the computer center. And after meeting with Mr. Sepulveda on Friday, and he's able to do an assessment, that list will actually come back at a later time for consideration. And also, this has not included the road and bridge list for the heavy equipment that will also be coming at a later time. The list before you on page four is the total. And of course, the total requested of this group of equipment was 600, just over $680,000. The recommended is $332,000 between various departments, with the priority being computer equipment that was dated and needed to be replaced. And of course, printers. And then priority was given down from them for other departments and the needs of equipment that needed to be replaced. Attached with that, right after that, is also the remaining vehicles on the following page after page four that were being replaced. This is also in reference to the general fund, the need to be replaced and the recommendations with that. There's one, but it would be more so to the specs as far as a modification to the pickup truck for emergency management to possibly to a one-ton pickup. And that all depends on the requirements of a decon trailer that the county is receiving and is going to need to pull. Just the specs will meet whatever the vehicle needs to be in order to move that trailer The bridge system list, everything on there is for the Court's approval. It's all being recommended, it's all equipment that needs to be replaced. The last page is actually items that are grouped together, which is phone systems and security systems that are being requested by various departments. It's not normal replacement, it's actually addition. And I have that separate for consideration before the Court. The only thing that's extraordinary or not part of that is under, it's listed under emergency management only because they were managing that project. And that is part of the interoperability project, which is countywide. And that is a tower patch. But I believe they met with the judge today, and from my understanding, that topic did not come up, Mr., or did it?
No, it did not come up.
It did not, okay. So, and speaking with Mr. Sepulveda, we can actually address that later so that way that can, I can tell you what it's about in layman's terms, the actual specifics of it. I don't know if you want a more description. But what it's supposed to accomplish is actually tie in the Olmito Tower, radio tower that's out by the sheriff's office into the Rancho Viejo Tower, to where as entities that we're currently dispatching for in the northern end of the county don't have to switch to another channel in order for them to communicate. When they do this fix, everyone will be able to communicate on the same channels at the same time. And it's, the price tag for that is $148,000. Excuse me. The other items, as I mentioned, were security systems that are being requested by the county clerk's office for both the judicial side and the administrative side, additional cameras for the tax assessors, a request for a new phone system for the Los Fresnos Annex, the LaFerry Annex, both a phone system and its security system. And then juvenile probation is also asking for surveillance cameras, basically a security system.
Excuse me, real quick. What happens to the security fee that's collected at all the JP offices? Is that going into the general fund, or is that going into a special fund to be utilized for security purposes by the JPs?
Previously, all those fees were going into a separate fund. I believe the auditor's here. And this past year, it was just rolled into the general fund. Now, the actual portion of the fee that's collected just by the JPs versus what's collected by the Courts, I'm not sure if it's mixed or if it's actually.
And maybe Mark can answer this. But if we're collecting this money for security purposes, why aren't those monies just being earmarked strictly for security so we wouldn't, and not go into the general fund per se? Just as a separate fund? That way, we can address the county clerk's security system and the JPs and all that.
Those we hold in reserve.
I'm sorry?
All the security fees, they were adjusted as of the last legislative session, a dollar out of every four. 25% are, that are collected by JPs outside of the county courthouse, shall be assigned to improve security at JP locations. And so we have that number set aside for them to use.
But is that being done?
Well, we'd had preliminary discussions with regards to using surveillance systems and security improvements and funding them with that, those funds.
Okay. Have, and I see JP Gonzalez here. Judge, are you, do you know about this fee? And have you or any of your colleagues implemented some kind of security measures out at the JP offices with this fee?
No.
Early on, that was the discussion of the funding for these particular projects. And so that's what we were expecting at that time. I have that information on my desk, and I can provide that to the JPs and to the commissioners' Court.
Now, I assume that you have it broken down by JP.
That's right.
Now, if it's going into the general fund, are you restricting those monies, or are they just part of the unreserved amount?
Only 25%.
No, I understand. But whatever is applicable to the security fee that the JPs collect.
Right. We have that set aside and identified.
Okay. So it's, when you look at your balance sheet, it shows up under the restricted in the general fund?
Well, it'll show up in this year's audit as that way.
As a restricted item, right?
Right.
Okay. How much money's in there?
I can't tell you right now.
Okay.
I can tell you tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine. And, okay, Judge, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
I'm sorry. I didn't really hear your question.
There's a fee that is collected by JPs that's to be used for security purposes, okay? And my question, because I've had calls from JPs about, well, in the past, before I was here, about the lack of security at some of their offices and what's happened to the security money, the security fee. So my question to you was, are you aware of the fee, number one? And number two, are there specific security measures that you would like to implement at your office that you have been unable to because it's not in your budget? That was my question.
Yes, sir. In regards to your first question, yes, I did know that there was a security fund that are collected from these fines. And my understanding that these security funds are supposed to be used strictly for those outlined areas and strictly for security measures. And yes, we would like to implement some measures out there because we have some of our clerks that stay there late at night, and we have no security whatsoever. We do have some type of a system that's supposed to be a security, but however, it's not regulated or it doesn't go anywhere other than a short beep that cannot be heard from anyone unless you get underneath that system. Other measures that we would need out there would be for our clerks when they, an individual creates problems to them. And we've had that in the past to where we cannot get a law enforcement officer unless we dial directly over to the constable's unit. So the security system that they have there, and I don't know if they're paying for it or not, because if, my understanding that that, whatever security company it's with, I don't know if the county is paying for it, but no one responds to it. So that question, I don't know. I guess it was placed in there whenever the building was erected. But there are a lot of measures that we need out there, security measures, that leaves us out there in the open because at times, the constable's office is not around there. And we would have to call directly to LaFeria Police Department to respond to some type of situation. We've had them in the past, but luckily, we've had it to where the constable's office is there to respond.
So are we paying a security?
So are we paying a security company, Mark?
I think what you're talking is an alarm system for a building, for the security of the building after hours. Probably not intend to be the same thing, for emergency response. I mean, you know, if somebody breaks into the building after hours, then your alarm would go off, is that correct?
It doesn't go off.
Well, but that's what it's intended is-
No, it rings somewhere.
It's not truly a security system for the security of the judge and his staff. I mean-
It's like a break-in to the building alarm.
Right, it's a break-in to the building.
And where does that-
And they usually call, like, either the sheriff's office, or they, you know, there's a designated number that they have that gets the call.
But Judge, going back to what Judge Coscos asked, you have not spent any of that money, or you have not recommended anything to get for security with those funds?
That is correct. I have not requested any of the security funds. That's why we're requesting them at this time. One of the other reasons is that we've had a lot of problems with the door, the front door leading into the building. And that has been fixed on numerous occasions. But, that door, at times, you can come in during the weekend when you get called out, and that door is open. So nobody has responded to it, or it doesn't go to anyone, their alarm system doesn't go off at all. And I've been told by Constable Diaz, he is here today, and he can tell you that they have had problems with the door, where they have had to stay there in the afternoon sometimes. And it locks up at times, at times it doesn't.
Is it supposed to be automatic, or what? How does it work?
It's manually where you can lock it, but it doesn't lock at times. Usually, that knob on it is broke off, so, I mean, they've gone to fix it several, several times.
Who, who has gone to fix it?
Uh, probably Valley Lock, I think, has gone to fix it. Not recently. We've, Constable Diaz here-
Well, they're probably tired of complaining, because no one's listening. I mean, you know, I think that we need to go out there and take a look at it, and you gotta replace the door, replace the door. I mean, gotta take care of that.
Is this one of our own?
Or whatever it is.
Be able to hold someone accountable. Judge Gonzalez, is this one of our own buildings, or is this a leased building?
No, it is a county building.
It is a county building.
It's a fairly new building. It's a fairly new building. Why don't we, why don't you get with Matzalino and, or somebody, and just take a look at that and fix it? I mean, that's just, come on.
You know, when we're talking about a security system, we're talking about-
Cameras.
Online surveillance and rapid response. If the judge has a problem in his courtroom, about seven years ago, we implemented a system for district and county court law judges that is a wireless, that they have a panic button. And when they push that button, and I think Commissioner Garza accidentally pushed it once, then the bailiff all showed up.
I was checking the system, Mark.
He's a JT commissioner. You know what that means? Gifted and talented, and they tend to-
Yeah, you pushed it, nobody showed up.
No, they all showed up.
But when we went to the unified radio system, we had-
Well, let me ask a question. How many, how many of our 11 JP offices have that type of silent alarm?
None do.
Okay, and, I mean, why?
But they're looking more at surveillance cameras. Surveillance cameras, unless you have somebody monitoring it as you go, then it's good for telling you what happened. It doesn't necessarily respond.
You know, I think, I think we need to come up with something to provide both. I mean, without knowing how much money's on the security fund, and how much every month goes in, but I think that we need to look at security cameras for those, you know, for some of those JP offices and that silent alarm system.
I really think it ought to be a part of every construction project that houses a judicial function, to provide not only, you know, security, the security format, and, you know, silent alarms and rapid response procedures.
Well, for now, since we don't have that. For now, let's, let's see what, let's see how much money's in that fund, if that's okay. And just, and let's figure out what we need to do in some of these JP offices and-
One thing I'm concerned about is that, yes, it's an ongoing fund that will build if we don't use it, but we're looking at specific buildings. I think we need a comprehensive plan to fund surveillance cameras for all the annexes that serve JPs, and that we use that fund to provide them.
Let me say, how many JPs are going, you got one, you got one JP, two JPs going to the Hardinjan Annex, the new facility. JPs going to the Levi Building?
Two.
Two, okay. So, has that been incorporated into their, into their plans in terms of surveillance cameras and alarm buttons and all that?
Nothing.
Is it too late to do that?
Yes.
I don't believe it's ever too late.
Yeah, you can do it, but-
It's just cheaper when you-
I mean, why don't, I mean, okay. All right. Well, we need, we need to take a look at that. I mean, I mean, if it's not too late to do it in the Levi Building, let's go ahead and do that, and then try to figure out a way to do it in the new Annex.
It's not too late in the Hardinjan Building, because it's just skeleton right now.
That's right.
Well, then maybe that's what we ought to do.
Maybe just one nice change order?
Yep, we need to do that.
Judge, let me summarize and see if I know what's happening here. First of all, short-term, the door will be taken care of at La Feria Annex. Am I, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right. And then, we will be getting a total on what's available in that-
Right.
Okay? And then, a comprehensive plan on how we're going to go about doing this? Getting the security in all the places?
Yes. And I think by that, I guess, if you can report back to us in a couple of weeks as to, number one, can we still do it in the Levi Building with the change order? Same thing with the Hardinjan Building? And maybe, if we need more time, that's fine. And then start, start talking with the JPs about what it is that they, they need, and what is it we can afford based on what's in that fund right now? And then, try to give the court an estimate of how much is accumulated on a roughly basis every month, so we know what kind of revenue stream we have.
I can give you a projected cash flow of what has happened and what will happen.
Okay.
I have another question on the list, and it's on page two of your handout, Javier. Fund balance, or fund number 100-4570. There's a typewriter on there.
Yes.
I mean, I've seen, I've seen lots of typewriters that look brand-new, being sold every summer in our county surplus auction. You know, I mean, they're all gone?
They're, at this point, there are. Actually, the ones that end up going to the auction, as you may or may not be aware, prior to the auction, the auditor's office sends out a memo to all county departments-
Yes, I am aware.
If you need any equipment, that they can go and look and see if there's something that they can use. This request, apparently, there are some departments that are still using typewriters, excuse me, and they need one to be replaced. Now, where are they checked with other departments?
Why don't we get them a scanner, so they can scan that document, and then just use a computer to print it out on a nice printer?
This looks like a pretty expensive typewriter.
Yeah.
Yeah, typewriters are actually for the commercial quality typewriters, they are expensive.
Everybody's got, everybody's got a computer. All you do is scan them, right? Isn't that the way it works?
Yeah, unless they're working, they could actually, even with, if you have some type of forms that are on NCR paper-
Is it like a death certificate?
Where they have to type multiple copies, you can do that with a dot-matrix printer, but I mean, but I mean, you're talking about $600 out of 300.
You've got another request here for a typewriter, precinct, Constable Precinct 3?
Yeah.
Typewriter.
Yeah, there's still various departments that still actually need typewriters.
Just wonder.
Just for clarification, just because you have the amount-
These are estimates.
Requested and approved, that does not mean that that's what you're gonna spend. That's just your best guess, right?
Correct. They still have to go out for where it's applicable for bids or for quotes, or purchase things off the state contract, correct?
And a lot of it is off state contract.
Right.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion to approve item 24, the fiscal year 2007 equipment list as presented by our budget officer?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tomayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion?
The only question that I have is, I know on the security systems, we're gonna wait for an update on that, but as far as the phone systems that are being requested, which is in essence just two, for the La Feria Annex and the Los Fresnos Annex.
For which, Los Fresnos and La Feria?
And La Feria. Currently, the phone systems are half, or from my understanding, is a Plexar system, similar to where you can call that one line, and that's it. You can't transfer a call to anyone else. And from between offices, between the tax office or the, or the constable's office, or the JPs, they can't either. And the system, the tax office, they were the ones who worked on the specs, or actually the proposal that was submitted, I guess if you want to do it.
Javier, just real quick, can you explain to the court, as you were making the recommendations and the number, were you targeting a certain amount of money that you could spend-
Yes.
In terms of equipment? And could you tell the court what criteria that was? What were you trying to accomplish by keeping the amount that you're recommending at that number? Why is it $100,000 more or less?
Historically, unless the court has specifically given direction, the payment schedule from year to year has been try, try to keep it the same from one year to the next. As to where equipment is coming off the financing list, we're adding equipment to kind of equalize the payments. Because as we go into the next budget cycle, that comes off the top right away. So if you're adding another $200,000 or $300,000 in financing, you have $200,000 less within your regular operation.
Okay, so really, what this is doing, your recommendation is keeping our amortized costs at the same amount-
Right.
Our payment plan at the same amount?
As close as possible.
And if we want to add more equipment, then we're gonna have to fund additional monies, obviously?
Correct.
Okay.
Judge and Commissioners, we had the judges, and I, and the constables at both offices, we requested, we sent a letter to Javier requesting to upgrade our phone system in both buildings, because, one, they're outdated and cannot be used, what, how, the way we wanted to, you can't transfer calls. If somebody calls the tax office and they wanna talk to the constable, well, we can't transfer the call.
Well, they're calling the tax office, though, right?
Yes.
I'm gonna call back.
They just called, give them the number for the constable?
Or they call the constable's office and they wanna tax information, well, they have to dial the tax office.
Is it the same, is it the same phone number?
It's the, different phone number.
Okay, I mean, I've had that problem at the Harrison Street Building, and I've had the problem here. People just can't transfer calls. I don't know if it's just, if it's a phone equipment, or just someone's not knowledgeable and they don't have the phone.
Well, the system that was installed in both buildings, of course, the Los Fresnos building, of course, been there for 10, 15 years, and it's an outdated system, and hasn't been replaced.
But the La Feria building is fairly new, though.
The problem with the La Feria building is-
What page are you on, Tony?
I'm on the general fund equipment list.
On what page?
It's with the, it's with the surveillance cameras and all that. When the La Feria building was built, the service was not there to install the equipment that was needed. So we had to use what was available then. So, that's why we had Jim from the auditor's office to do an analysis, and I think that should, that should be as part of the backup on your agenda, as to why and how and who and when this, this equipment is needed in both of these offices. And we submitted a request signed by the JP, myself, the constable, in both buildings. Of course, in La Feria, we have two JPs, one constable, and of course, my office. So, we made the request to Javier, and of course, it's here before you. There's no recommendation, because he indicated that he was gonna let the court decide what to do. This has nothing to do with the surveillance.
Right, but, you know, it's like-
It does, because it's on there too, as one of the requests.
Well, it's two different companies, or two different proposals. It's two, two different issues, Commissioner.
It's apples and oranges.
Yes.
The, I kind of anticipated that you were gonna ask you for something that wasn't on there, and that's why I asked, you know, what criteria Javier used to come up with this number, and what he was trying to accomplish by doing that, which was trying to keep our payment structure the same. So I think the question is, does the court want to add more debt? And then if, and again, we go back, and I'm not arguing or disputing anything, but if we, if we choose to do the Los Fresnos Annex, which is 32,000, is it, I'm sorry, the La Feria Annex, that's $32,000, then why wouldn't we do the Los Fresnos Annex for 11? And why wouldn't we do the county clerk's, you know, money for $33,000? So, I mean, if that's what the court wants to do, then we have to know that it's gonna cost X amount of dollars more, you know, per year to do this. Or the other option is, you know, what is, what other departments are we, are we going to cut? And then if you recall, the, a few weeks ago, there was a recommend, there was a recommendation by, by the sheriff's office to buy this Swatmobile. And that is off the list for now, okay? Because it was gonna take away a significant amount of, from every department. So I guess my question is, what department would you like the court to adjust? And if, and if no one's gonna make a recommendation of what department to adjust, is a court willing to add additional debt to the existing debt? And that, that's a question that we have to answer. But before we have to answer that, we need to know how much more it's gonna cost on an annual basis if we do, you know, the county clerk's security, La Feria, Los Fresnos, et cetera. And then where do you stop it? I mean, I mean, again, it's, we're making, trying to make good decisions, but they're arbitrary. And so, we have a bunch of stuff over here that we're gonna have to address as well. Why are we giving the district clerk only half of their computers? Why not give them all, as an example? So, I mean, I'd like to hear from you all, or the court, if, you know, do we cut someplace else, or are we willing to undertake additional, additional debt? So.
Well, let me, let me try and clarify something. Mark is still here, isn't he?
Mark?
We have, we're showing phone system, security system. Phone system, $15,000, security system, $17,000. Did we not just say that there's, there's monies that is set aside for the security system?
There's money set aside for the, for the security system. Mark's supposed to get back to us, let us know how much is there, and then address everyone. So, I don't know how much is there. He's gonna let, maybe for the next meeting, he can let us know. We can always approve the, the equipment list as presented, and if we need to come back at a subsequent meeting to add additional equipment or concerns, we can do that as well. Unless you all wanna table this item for a couple of weeks, while, you know?
I'd like to move ahead with it.
It's up to you on whatever-
Yeah, 'cause there, there will be actually, the request by the computer department is actually gonna be coming back. The heavy equipment for road and bridge, that also is, is going to come back within the next couple of weeks. So-
So it can be added then?
They can consider these at that time, and see what we're, where we're at on the security funds, and where they can be applied.
All you gotta do, Tony, is give up 18 computers, and we could fund those items.
What I'd like to hear again is on the, on the phone system, the justification. There's more than just the transferring of calls.
I think the judge will elaborate more, because he is in the building.
I'd like, I'd like to hear that.
On a daily basis, and the constable.
Commissioner and Judge, one of the problems that we have is when a call comes in, and Mr. Esaguirre mentioned that part. And, but the problem is, our taxpayers, when they call in, they want you to transfer that call. They don't wanna be calling back again. Don't give me that number, transfer them in. We try to explain to them what the purpose is. Ever in our office, mine is pretty far away from where the, my office, from where the clerk up front is located. She has to either holler at me, or call me by the phone and tell me, hey, I've got somebody over here that needs to talk to you. They come and talk to me, by the time we arrange something on whether they're gonna pay the fine or whatever, or if I need additional paperwork, I have to either get up, call her, she has to wait a few minutes to get off the phone. While if we had some type of a system where I can automatically just dial on to her line and tell her what I need, it wouldn't create that much of a problem. At times, I have to contact the other judge's office, 'cause I need paperwork from their office, 'cause at times, we see both my office and his office, and vice versa. If I'm not there at that particular time, he has to either get on the phone, or tell his clerk to get up-
his clerk to get up and go all the way over to the other judge's office to get the paperwork and then come back. So, it, it kinda creates a, a big, big problem, not only to our employees, but mostly for our taxpayers. Because they get mad when they call in and they're from a payphone or they're calling long distance and they wanna talk to the judge. Say, let's take for example Judge Sanchez's office. Well, for some reason or another, they call our office. Because that's, I think that's been implemented there for a longer period of time, that they know our number. And we have to tell them that they need to call a certain number because they have all the information on whatever they're looking for. If they wanna talk to the constable's office, we have to tell them, you know, you have to call back and dial this number. Same thing with the tax office. And I think that's created a problem in the past. We've had that problem and we just wanna try to see if we can correct that problem so we won't have high-rate taxpayers on our hands.
Judge, do you have any idea how old this phone system is?
Since the building's been up there, I've only been there for two years, so I don't know how long that system has been in there. But it's an old system and.
Five years.
Five years?
You know, I've worked with a lot of phone systems and, and I know that, I mean, five years, you go back, you would be able to, to forward calls. I mean, I don't know who picked the system for you or whatever, but I don't think it's that old that you shouldn't be able to do this.
They upgrade something in it.
I mean, I can see why you're very frustrated.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It's something we need to look at.
Thank you.
That's why we had, Commissioner Benavides, that's why we had Jim Roberts from the auditor's office or computer center, who did you work for, in the computer center and analyzed the building and the system. And he came up with a proposal and it's the $13,000 or whatever, $15,000 to.
To upgrade.
So, you know, we had somebody that, that knows, let's have a quick.
Well, let's do this. I mean, I just think that if, if we're gonna do the LaFeria Annex, we have to look at the Los Fresnos Annex as well. I mean, there's no reason to do one and not the other just because they're not here to speak up. Why don't you, Javier, why don't you look at seeing how much more, I mean, we're talking about $43,000 at the most, right?
Twenty-six.
So, you're talking about, maybe about, I'm sorry? No, you're talking, well.
Just for the phone system.
Well, no, but I'm talking about if you add the, I'm sorry, $26,000. If you look at, if you're looking at that, you do it over what, four years, three years or what?
Three years.
Okay. You know, see if we can find a way to do it where it doesn't affect our, our debt that much, but bring it back when you're ready to present that.
Okay.
Because we, we have other issues we have to talk about, might as well just do that one as well. So, for now, I've got a motion by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Gadsa to approve the equipment list for 2007. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That was as recommended.
As recommended, that's correct. Item carries, item 25. Thank you, guys. Item 25, consideration possible selection evaluation committee for dental services in the infirmary, AR, ARFP 1366, radiology diagnostic services from the infirmary, ARFP 1690, possible development of land at Andy Bowie Park immediately north of South Potteran Convention Center, RFP 061203. Pete?
Judge, yeah, this item was taken care of with item number three and four, the same committee.
Okay. All right, so, we'll pass then.
So, move to.
Do I hear a motion to?
Do we need to table the item?